This conference will now be recorded.
Councilman O'Connell? Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolcinski?
Here.
Mayor Bernstein?
Here, thank you. We're going to open the meeting to the public one of three times that we will. This is in the work session, so anyone from the public who wishes to speak, please state your name and address. For the record, you'll have five minutes to address the governing body.
Hi, this is Kristin Sarnes.
Kristin, I can't see you from where I am, but I recognize your voice, so please. Good to see you again tonight. Welcome to the work session.
Thank you. I would like to find out if there's an update on the property that's across districts from me. Thirty-seven nights ago, they're having a bail review. Were you able to hear my question?
I was, I'm sorry. Everyone else was holding, we're going to have to do it to the screen, so we're trying to correct. We're going to have to do one of two things. We're going to have to take the phone and pass it around. It's the best we're going to do. Because this is not going to work. Okay? So, which phone? Ed, can we use your phone?
We can hear you, Ari, if you want to speak, we can hear you.
One minute. You turned it my clock back, so it's faster. Kristin, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. So, Ron Kishner had called me, and I think he may have sent out an email that he has information that he wanted to report to the neighbors tomorrow. So, he's not here. He had a family issue, he had a family event, so he couldn't be here today. But he wanted to let me know that he would be reaching out to the neighbors tomorrow. So, with your indulgences, that's the schedule for the update on the property.
Okay, that's good, thank you very much. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I have a question for Amy about 2:20, 2:30, but I figure you're going to probably get this in your report. So, I don't know if you want me to ask a question now or later.
You can ask it now. I may, I have to leave early tonight, so I may not. Depending on the time, I'm not sure if I'll get to say my full report, so.
Oh, okay, well then, if you don't mind, I'd just like for you to give a little bit of an update on the contamination remediation that's going on at 2:30 West Crescent. And also, if you could include in that, when you think, or when you're estimating that Hampshire might come before the Land Use Board, because I'd love to hear their presentation when they give their application.
Sure, so I actually emailed you those questions back today. I don't know if you checked your email, so I did actually email those back. But, so as far as the remediation, we have a bidder. Their Ambien is the name of them, and we are right now currently going through the process of making sure that they have all their requirements. So, we need to make sure things like their insurance are in place and the performance bond, et cetera. We do have a pre-con meeting scheduled for next week, and we are hoping that we're going to be starting on September 14th. The remediation should take about 30 to 60 days. We're hoping it'll be closer to the 30. And what was your next question?
When are they coming to the Land Use Board?
We are hoping, hoping, keep our fingers crossed, the Land Use Board doesn't even know this yet, but we're hoping to get on the schedule for October. But we're still, we still have a lot of hurdles to overcome before we get there. We still have to get plans. Obviously, there has to be some studies done, so we still have some hurdles. But if everything goes according to plan, and we're pushing very, very hard to make this happen, we're hoping around the October meeting.
Okay, thank you. And is the tenant for 2:20, the front building, 2:20 West Crescent, has that tenant left? I know that you've told me.
Yes, they left. They left, the building has been cleared out. Yes, they had to leave.
Okay. All right. And then I have a third question. Really, I don't know who would answer this, but it's about what's on the agenda tonight for the special law enforcement officer. I know we're bringing in two more. Is this the same position as what we appointed to the high school last year or the year before?
Yeah, Kristin, it is, I will speak to that, it is the same position. We're not hiring two more. It was a one-year appointment, so we are hiring one more. So, we are reappointing the one from last year, and we're hiring another one. We're a total of two.
Sorry, both of those gentlemen will be up at the high school?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard during the work session part of the meeting? Not seeing anyone or hearing anyone. I will close the meeting to the public at this time. And now, we're going to get to what for me is the highlight of this meeting as far as the presentations. I had mentioned at the last meeting that we were going to be doing this, that there were two officers in Allendale who saved a life. And that's not hyperbole, that's the real deal. On July 25th, there was an event where a woman was choking, and these two officers sprang into action. I wish I could say I did anything other than grandstand and jump in a picture. But greatness is amongst us. So, we're going to acknowledge their acts of heroics in one of three ways. I'm going to read a letter from Police Officer Stettner, who wrote to me. Chief Scherb is here to award them or to deliver something to them. And then, we have two certificates of commendation. If there were ever a day where people should be able to fill up this area, it would be a day like today. So, we could all show our gratitude to the two of you. I will start with the letter to me from Police Officer Stettner. Dear Mayor Bernstein, On behalf of Chiefs George W. Scherb and the Allendale Police Department, I would like to commend Police Officers Shawn Hubbard and Alex Helmer for their exemplary service to the borough of Allendale on the evening of July 25th, 2020. Both officers were assigned as scene security and traffic control for a borough's in-street dining event when they were met by a panicked staff member of Mezzaluna Bistro. A dining patron was choking on their food and needed immediate assistance. Officers Hubbard and Helmer literally jumped into action, locating the 68-year-old female choking victim on the West Allendale Avenue sidewalk. Officer Helmer performed Heimlich maneuver thrust and back blows in an attempt to clear the victim's obstructed airway. When these attempts were unsuccessful, both officers reassessed. By this time, the victim had begun to draw a little, as her life began to slip from her. Sidewalk below the diner. While both officers took all these actions, they still managed to request additional officers to respond to the scene with a defibrillator and oxygen to aid in performing CPR. By the time Officer Kunsel and I, this is from Police Officer Stettner, had arrived to the scene, the diner's obstruction had been cleared by the actions of Police Officers Hubbard and Helmer, and she had begun breathing on her own. Officer Hubbard ensured that the obstruction was entirely removed, and the patient's condition improved quickly. My conclusion is an honor to work with both of these men, and I believe they are both deserving of special recognition from our police department and the Borough of Allendale with a lifesaving award. Respectfully submitted, Police Officer Paul Stettner, badge 236. And I could not agree more. I was there, I got there shortly thereafter, and I stood in awe, as I do to you officers, when you're called into this, you know what to do. This is not the first time. It's not reading out a book, you have to bring it to, you have to bring your skills to bear, grace under pressure, grace under fire. You have my eternal gratitude, indebtedness, and I think on behalf of all of Allendale. So, thank you very, very much. So, we're not going to let you off so quickly or easily. Chief Scherb's going to come up, and I'm going to award the certificate of commendation as well. Okay, everyone, thank you. Next on the agenda is September's National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. In recognition of this, each year, the Allendale Women's Club places teal ribbons around trees throughout the borough to help raise awareness. On behalf of our community, I thank them for all of their efforts. And I'm going to read the proclamation declaring September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas ovarian cancer continues to have one of the highest mortality rates of any cancer, and it's the leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas each September especially, we, the mothers, sisters, daughters, we remember the mothers, sisters, and daughters who have lost to ovarian cancer. We extend our support to those living with this disease. And whereas each year, thousands of women are diagnosed with and go on to battle valiantly against this disease. Yet ovarian cancer remains difficult to detect, and women are often not diagnosed until the disease has reached an advanced stage. Because early detection is the best defense against ovarian cancer, it is essential that women know the risk factors associated with this disease. Whereas during National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month and throughout the year, we commend all the brave women fighting this disease and recognize their families and friends, compassion, and encouragement. In the memory of all brave women who have lost their lives to ovarian cancer and in support of generations of women to come, let us recommit to reaching a safer, healthier future for all of our citizens. And whereas the Allendale Women's Club will be placing teal ribbons around trees throughout the borough of Allendale as part of Turn the Towns Teal, a campaign to raise awareness of ovarian cancer. Now, therefore, I, Ari Bernstein, on behalf of the mayor and council of the borough of Allendale, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the borough of Allendale, and thank the Allendale Women's Club for all their efforts to raise awareness of this disease. I call upon citizens, government agencies, organizations, healthcare providers, and research institutions to raise ovarian cancer awareness and continue helping Americans live longer, healthier lives. And I urge women across the country to talk to their healthcare providers and learn more about this disease. Signed by myself, the mayor of Allendale, today, August 27, 2020. And now, we're going to move on to the administration part of the work session, and we'll do the agenda review. Before we start there, I'd like to note that the August 13th work and regular session minutes are not on tonight's agenda, but they will be listed for approval at the September 10th meeting. The agenda review. Twenty dash 193 authorized temporary modification in relaxation of portions of Chapter 252 vehicles and traffic. So, due to the COVID-19, we are readjusting our train parking permit period and fees. Resolution 20 dash 193 establishes the fees and temporarily sets the renewal period, which will now be September 1st. And Ordinance 2012, which is being introduced tonight, will permanently memorialize this adjusted permit period. And this came out, as you will recall, this came out of public safety. Right? These resolutions came out of public safety, thank you for your work there. Next. Twenty dash 194, and twenty dash 195, and twenty dash 196. And the ordinance, we can all be kind of read together, and Kristin Sarnes had asked about this. This has to do with our SLEO 3 officer, our SLEO officer. Northern Highlands in the borough have agreed to place two Class 3 special law enforcement officers at the high school for added security measures in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. Last year, there was only one, and Northern Highlands will once again be covering all expenses related to these positions. Tonight, we will be appointing two officers and swearing them in. We will also be introducing Ordinance 20-13 to amend our code to memorialize the two SLEO officers. Ray, is there anything you need to add to that? And today, the day here, and thank you very much. I know it would be unfortunate, but all of Allendale, we appreciate you, and so do all. Anything to add? Okay. We will now move on to the consent agenda. We have six resolutions listed for approval. The bill list, I reviewed it, Matt, you said you did, and Amy, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it as well, but those bills have been approved. The bills have been approved, and they're being signed. Twenty dash 198 to the tax overpayment. These resolutions authorize refunds of 2020 tax overpayments on several properties. Twenty dash 199, approve the 2020 townwide garage sale for the Allendale Women's Club. We're happy to approve the Allendale Women's Club townwide garage sale, which will be held on Saturday, September 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with a rain date of the next day, Sunday, September 27th. Next is 20 dash 200, appoint police department personnel, police radio dispatcher, full-time Blake Smith. We recently had a full-time dispatcher resign to become a police officer in another town, so this resolution authorizes hiring a replacement. We're happy to welcome Blake Smith to the borough. Chief Scherb, would you like to speak to this item?
So, Ari, I don't know, did Chief Scherb speak? Because I can't hear. I don't know if I'm missing something. Ed, I can hear you, I think, is that you, Ed?
I can hear Ed now, I couldn't hear anybody before either.
Sorry about that. As long as you can get me there. No, we settled a little dispatcher between the police and AVAC that was settled tonight. I think that everyone's happy now. And I think that dispatchers do a great job. They know what to do in an emergency in a heartbeat, so I can't thank them enough.
Thank you, and we are testing on one phone. And the feedback and the ringing, so we're sorry about that. If it sounds like someone's talking from a distance, we just can't get the phone fast enough to them or quick or close enough to them. Twenty dash 201 and twenty dash 202, which has to do with the outdoor cafes and the temporary extension, expansion of permissible temporary signage. Back in June, as you may recall, we authorized resolutions to temporarily relax certain provisions of the borough code pertaining to outdoor cafes and temporary signage in an effort to help our downtown businesses, as well as those wanting to advertise their support for COVID-19 relief efforts. As the public health emergency still exists, and some of the governor's executive orders restrictions are still in effect, we're extending our prior approvals that were set to expire in early September to October 30th. And it is 8 o'clock, okay? And which is, the timing is good. So, we are, just to stay here, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved. Second, Holman.
Give me on the second.
Hi.
Thank you very much, stay with us, please. Okay, we are back, 8 o'clock. This is the August 27th, 2020 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome everyone who's joining us via video and telephone teleconference. We ask at this time that you please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two more opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we'll advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, if you could please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the Record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August 24th, 2020, Sunshine Notice was sent to the Record, the Ridgewood News, and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, great, thank you very much. We're all going to rise to the floor. Thank you. Michelle, can you please conduct the roll call?
Here.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
I can barely hear you, but I'm here.
And Councilman Wolcinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Next on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only. So, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on agenda items only? Not seeing anyone. I went through in the work session, the resolutions, 20 dash 193, 194, 195, and 196. Can I, Ray, can I do them? Okay. So, I would request a motion to approve 20 dash 193. So moved, Strouch. Second. Michelle, please conduct the roll call for 20 dash 193.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I didn't hear my name, but I am next.
Good work.
Okay, next, I would request a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash 194. Thank you, Ed, second?
Second.
Okay, O'Toole, second. Michelle, please conduct the roll call on 20 dash 194.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
I think that was me, yes.
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 Yes, she said yes, good. And now, 20 dash 195, a motion to approve that resolution. Thank you, Ed, second?
Second.
O'Toole, Matt? O'Toole? Michelle, please conduct the roll call, that's okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
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 Now, I would request a motion to approve Resolution 20 dash 196. Thank you, Ed, a second?
Second, O'Toole.
O'Toole, thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Is that me? Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Jim?
Yep.
Yes, for Wozinski.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for responding. Uh, next is the oath of office for William Wright and Daniel Kellad for our class three special law enforcement officers, three oh three. Um, Chief Sherb, if you could please join me? Um.
Good. Sorry, what can you do first? I solemnly swear, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States, and to this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of your position, all the duties of your position, according to the best of your ability. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Bye, State Attorney.
Bye, Daniel Kellad.
I solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state, and to the government established in the United States, and to this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of your position, all the duties of your position, according to the best of your ability. So, you got it.
You, you, you want to put it up there? Okay. Introduction, introduction of ordinances. Um, we have twenty dash one two and twenty dash thirteen, um, where they, they will be read together. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinances twenty dash twelve and twenty dash thirteen, and set, set the public hearing for September tenth, twenty twenty at eight PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building. I would request a motion.
So moved, Scott.
Thank you, Ed. I would request a second.
Second, O'Toole.
Thank you, Councilman O'Toole. Michelle, if you could please read the title of the ordinance and conduct the roll call.
Ordinance twenty dash twelve, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Article eleven, section sixty-two A of chapter two fifty-two of the Code of the Borough of Allendale entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Ordinance number, um, yeah, ordinance twenty dash thirteen, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Article two, section twenty-one A of chapter twenty-six of the Code of the Borough of Allendale entitled Police Department.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stratch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
I, I think she might have, yeah.
You're on mute, Amy. You're on mute.
Amy, you're muted.
Sorry, I lost my connection. I just got backed on, back on. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda, which I went through in the work session. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved, O'Toole. Thank you, Matt. I would request a second.
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Um, Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stratch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we will go with, uh, committee reports. Uh, O'Connell, would you like to get your report?
Certainly, Mayor. I'll give you the mic back. Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you, Ed.
Okay, bear with me here. Uh, I have, uh, some news on the deer issue in Allendale, but I'd like, uh, Councilman Sasso, since he started this two years ago with Law &amp; Public Safety, to give his, uh, comments on the deer issue. Would you do that, Councilman Sasso?
Yeah, but it's kind of a, I've been working on this for a number of years. It's kind of long and complex. Could we narrow it down a little bit? I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you'd like to jump in with any questions we may get, then, uh, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll give, uh, what I have, and stop me if you need to.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we did, uh, meet with Law &amp; Public Safety to discuss the deer issue. I did get to speak with Saddle River Administrator, and I also got to speak with, uh, Dan Lombardo from the New Jersey Bow Hunters Association. He's vice president of that organization. So right now, I also got some info from our attorney, Mr. Riss, that, uh, in order to have a hunt in Allendale, we would need about, uh, two permissions from the state, one being the DEP, uh, and that would be about a six-month process. Uh, we would have to abide by all the guidelines by the New Jersey, uh, regulations for hunting with a bow in Allendale. Uh, I also talked, like I said, to Don Lombardo, and, uh, he had mentioned that he also worked with Saddle River, and we would need to have a refrigerated trailer. We would have to pay seventy-five dollars per deer to have it butchered at White House Station. We would also need a police officer available in case a deer went on private property, so the hunter would not be trespassing, would be able to go on the property to retrieve his deer, and fifteen percent of the meat, uh, gathered would go to feeding the hungry. Uh, this process would take a little bit of time. Mr. Lombardo said it would, he would have to come take a look at Allendale to see if we have the right setting to actually have a hunt here. He would vet all the bow hunters, uh, meaning they'd have to be licensed in New Jersey. He'd test them on shooting and, uh, written tests as well before they were even allowed to come to Allendale.
Councilman O'Connell, can I pause you right there?
Certainly.
So a couple of things. There are no regulations, just to be clear now, I just want to be clear on a few things. There are no regulations for bow hunting specific to Allendale. The regulations are determined by New Jersey Fish and Game. So they're at the state.
Statewide regulation, yes.
Okay, so let's be clear about that one. Under the right circumstances, meaning the right season, a hunting license, somebody could, at the beginning of the next hunting season, bow hunting season, of course, beginning of the October, somebody could, again, if they're duly licensed, could start hunting right away. They don't need our permission.
They certainly do not. They are allowed to hunt in Allendale. You are correct.
Okay. The other thing is, um, a couple of things that you said are, I'm a little curious, because Councilwoman Wozinski and I had a meeting with Saddle River, a long one, just a few weeks ago. They did mention that they get, they, but first of all, let me back up a little bit. They said, with the exception of a refrigerated truck, there is no cost to the borough.
This I got from Mr. Lombardo today.
So you said New Jersey bow hunters. Is that the same thing as the United Bow Hunters in New Jersey?
This is who Saddle River uses. I went right to Jerry, the administrator of Saddle River, and got the info from him.
Okay. I didn't hear anything in our meeting about a seventy-five dollar fee. The hunters who cull the deer are happy to take it. They're not going to pass any cost on to the borough. Nor with, nor would you go hunting anywhere and pass the cost of butchering this deer on to the landowner. That's up to you.
I'm just relaying what I got from, from Dan, who did the hunt in Saddle River.
Well, there's a disconnect somewhere. We need to clear that up.
Absolutely, and we have time to clear it up if we decide to do a deer hunt next year.
Yes, we do. Okay, I think that was it so far. Oh, and I did not, in my meeting with Saddle River, did they ever mention needing an officer, a police officer standing by to do anything?
Like I said, I, I just got, uh, the administrator's info on who they used and then called them right away.
Okay, well, we spoke to two different people, so, you know, clearly that can happen. Um, so, okay, well, we have time here, so we'll figure it out, but I just wanted to make sure we're, we're comparing notes, which is a good thing. We're having a dialogue, which is important. So I'm sorry, interrupted you. Continue.
No, no, no. Uh, where was I? Uh, ba, 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 and they said they needed a...
Of coal?
The, the one that Saddle River undertook is what's called, put this volume down here. But the one that Saddle River, it's what's called the Community-Based Deer Management Program.
I can't, I'm sorry, Ray, I cannot hear you.
That is run through the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, the Division of Game and Wildlife.
Sorry, Ray, we can't hear you.
Nope, definitely. Let me try, let me try this. Can you, can you hear me now?
A little better.
Any better now?
Can't hear you, Ray.
Bob, can you see the words?
We are having technical difficulties tonight.
Try my laptop.
Okay, is this volume there?
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
They can hear me. Okay, okay. So, so we just have to make sure that we're not talking cross purposes on different types of programs. The, the program in Saddle River is what's called the, the Community-Based Deer Management Program. That is a state-run program that has very, very specific requirements. Uh, there are, there's a manual that they actually publish on those program requirements. So, so Saddle River went through each of those steps, and actually there's a, uh, I believe a four-step application process. Uh, there are requirements even for disposition of the venison. Uh, municipalities involved in the program are required to donate the venison from the deer cull to Community Food Bank and pay the cost of processing the meat. If volunteer hunters are utilized to reduce the deer population, they may take some or all of the deer harvested. So these, these are all very, very specific program requirements, which get overlaid on top of the general state regulations that deal with hunting. So, so if you're talking about a private hunt, and I think Councilman Sasso was talking about some of the elements of a private hunt, uh, and, and that is subject only to the statewide restrictions, which have things about the, the seasonality, the hours in which you can hunt, the type of bows which you can use at any season, the number of deer that you're allowed to, to shoot in any given season, uh, the hundred and fifty foot requirement from any building absent permission. They have formal permission slips. So all of those are state regulatory requirements, which are imposed on any hunter. Separated apart, there is a more formal program. That's what our neighbors in Saddle River did. That is the one where they actually send in a botanist to look at the areas to be hunted. They consider what the dangers that are presented by both the deer and, two, the adjoining properties, the fo- the foliage, the fauna. So depending on what direction in the future the borough goes, it may deal with either the more formal statewide program, or just deal more generally with the regulations that any hunter would be subject to. So I just want to make sure, I mean, there were elements that were mentioned both, uh, by both council members that are absolutely correct, but, but some of them overlap and some of them don't overlap, depending on what type of program you're involved in. Ray, thank you very much for clearing that up. You said it better than I could, as usual.
That's right.
Um, with that being said, with the Law &amp; Public Safety meeting, with the, uh, chief and his sergeants, uh, we decided that we are not like Saddle River. We have closer houses that it would not be safe to have a hunt at this time, but it's certainly not off the table. We will, uh, I will talk to Dan. I invited him up to Allendale to take a look to see if we would be suitable, and to see if, uh, he could give us some more direction at a future Law &amp; Public Safety meeting before it gets too late to see what we have to do. I'd rather try and get that stuff done sooner than later, so if we do decide as a council to do a hunt next year, we will be ready for it. Uh, sorry, Mayor, it's gonna be a little while. Uh, as far as the call volume for the, uh, headquarters, we had ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight calls as of around four o'clock today. Uh, there was one thousand thirty-five nine-one-one calls, one hundred and twenty-six fire department calls, two hundred and sixty-four EMS calls, uh, two arrests. Uh, officers are still doing training as they can. Two officers were trained in the ALCO test. Uh, we have our new dispatcher that we voted on, and Officer Stettner is recertifying the officers on radar enforcement. Uh, let's see what else. I also have, uh, mentioned to everybody that there will be a memorial service this Saturday, August twenty-ninth, where retired Allendale Police Officer Andy Baum, who recently passed away, and everyone is welcome to attend. For those that, who you, who didn't know Andy, he was born and raised in Allendale. His mother lived at the corner of West Maple and West Crescent, and Andy lived on West Maple with his wife and daughter until they moved to Maryland after... calls, two hundred and sixty-four EMS calls, two arrests. Officers are still doing training as they can. Two officers were trained in the ALCO test. We have our new dispatcher that we voted on, and Officer Stettner is recertifying the officers on radar enforcement. Let's see what else. I also have mentioned to everybody that there will be a memorial service this Saturday, August twenty-ninth, where retired Allendale Police Officer Andy Baum, who recently passed away, and everyone is welcome to attend. For those who didn't know Andy, he was born and raised in Allendale. His mother lived at the corner of West Maple and West Crescent, and Andy lived on West Maple with his wife and daughter until they moved to Maryland after he was retired. Andy was the police department's K-9 officer and served Allendale with three separate K-9s. The memorial procession will start at eleven forty-five at Northern Highlands via vehicle, and the memorial service will start one P.M. at Guardian Angel, and everyone is invited to attend this procession and/or this service. And with that being said, Mayor, I think I am done.
I'm on the floor with a police officer, Andy Baum. He, twenty-eight years, I think, as an officer in Allendale, and he was, every officer that I've spoken to, I just can't say enough, he was the premier K-9 handler. Chief, can you add anything that should be said?
Hold on one second. This is...
Oh, unmuted.
Okay.
Andy was actually one of the first small-town K-9 officers in the county, possibly in the state. I mean, he blazed the trail for everybody in the area. He also helped train other, like Mawa and Saddle River and their dogs and all that. So, he was pretty well invested in that. He was a very good handler, actually.
Great. So, thank you, thank you for that.
No problem.
And that is this Saturday at one o'clock at Guardian Angel. I just wanted to figure that I would do it then, add on. Great. Okay, next report. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. Before I start, is Officer Wright and Officer Kellogg still in the room? I didn't hear that. I still didn't hear that, but I wanted to welcome them. I wanted to welcome Officer Wright back. I wanted to welcome Officer Kellogg. I see movement up there.
Yeah, Steve, they aren't here any longer.
Oh, they're not there? Okay. Skip that. I'm glad to have them, though. It's a great thing, especially being a parent of Northern Highlands kid. I'm very happy to have them there.
Thank you for that. We'll make sure that your comments go in the minute of the meeting so that they're duly noted.
Thank you, thank you very much. I feel much better, especially in these crazy times, having them there. So, the Land Use Committee was due to meet last week, January twentieth, but I had to cancel at the last minute to go away for a few days. Thank you, committee members who sent me alternate dates. I will schedule something on the calendar by the end of this weekend for next week. Also, I saw an email to the committee. I want to take a look at our short-term rental ordinance for a possible amendment. As in this crazy world we're in with COVID and all that, people have been renting out pools and other things on an hourly basis as close by as Mawa. And there was an article in the paper about it, and one of the persons who was renting said, "My neighbors hate it, but I made ten thousand dollars the last month." So, our short-term rental amendment doesn't appear to cover anything except the dwellings, so we're going to discuss that in committee next week. And that's all I have.
Councilman Sasso, thank you. I was supposed to be working when you circulated that article, but thank you for sending it, and I look forward to discussing it at our next meeting.
Hey, Ari, can I go next? I have to run.
Of course, Amy.
All right, I'm going to speak fast. So, the burrow is holding its annual nine-eleven memorial ceremony. It's going to be on Friday, September eleventh, at seven o'clock up at the Red Barn. It's rain or shine. As you all may know, we have a speaker series that we started many years ago, and this year, the speaker is Dr. Jeffrey Burkes. He's the chief of the dental identification unit at the Medical Examiner's Office in New York City at the time. So, he's going to be telling his moving recollections of that day and the weeks that followed as the chief forensic dentist. He's an excellent speaker, and he's got a great story to tell, so I hope that we have a great crowd. We're also going to be honoring five of our very own first responders who were at Ground Zero from AVAC. So, it is rain or shine again, so please join us. Thank you to Rich and Ray for getting the fountains going, and the place looks amazing. Labor Day is fast approaching. Thank you, everybody, for a great year at Crestwood Lake. We are going to be piping out the season again with Klonavale at around seven o'clock. So, if you want to come to join, please bring your mask. Two-twenty, two-thirty, we are still working on documents. Currently now, we're working on the financial agreements and the redevelopment agreements. We have also been working on the meets and bounds agreements and surveys. We are currently looking to get some drawing soon for the municipal buildings and the condos. Our lawyers, as I mentioned earlier, have been working to make sure that the person who is doing the remediation has all their insurance in place, and we're hoping to have a shovel in the ground mid-September. We had a meeting for the playground again, so we are looking forward to getting that done this fall. Our downtown streetscape is moving forward. We have a pre-con for that scheduled for next week. And we had another great newsletter that went out. It has a lot of great information. We have our September one that's going to be going out soon. Please encourage all of your resident, your neighbors to sign up for it. Thank you to Michelle and Tatiana for helping out with this, and thanks to Tyler to figuring out how to send it so we could keep all the format going. And that's it, and I got to run, everybody. Bye. Bye.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report?
Sure.
You're up.
All right. So, first, residents should have received what I hope is the last notification for the tetrachlorethylene violation that we had over a year ago. And in the letter that the NJDEP approved, I felt it was clearly stated that our tests continued to be non-detect since the repairs were completed at the new street treatment plant. So, that is positive news. You never like having to send out letters like that, but obviously, the NJDEP is here to ensure that we have a great safe water supply, and we have been compliant, and this hopefully will be the last of the notifications. They are very numerous, but the good news is that the TCE levels have been non-detect since the repairs were completed. We are back in phase two water restrictions, and hopefully, we will be able to move back to phase one in September. The rain that we're getting tonight is helpful, but we will certainly keep everybody notified and send out a constant contact when we are able to move back to phase one. And just thank you so much to all of our residents for, you know, setting their sprinklers appropriately, not washing their cars. I know it's hard, and, you know, so thank you so much. Due to the storm, we had needed to reschedule the virtual water meeting that we had been planning. The date will be Wednesday, September sixteenth, at seven P.M. The link was provided in the last little newsletter we had go out, but it will also be provided again in the September one. We'll make sure it's on the burrow website and the Facebook page. The agenda, again, we'll be talking about the Allendale water components, our working relationship with Suez, our utilization, the use of why we use the water restrictions and how those help us, and also talking about some of the future meetings, because I think it is important that, you know, we provide as much education about this very valuable resource. We are wrapping up a PFAS feasibility study, which we had hired Mot McDonald to do. Our committee has met with Mot McDonald multiple times to ensure that we are gathering the information necessary to evaluate the next steps in possibly incorporating a PFAS treatment step into our water treatment. And I will give a presentation to the council. You know, our committee will work together to make sure we have a presentation to the council and the public in a future meeting, as there still are some follow-up items I have with Mot McDonald's, but they've been great to work with. I was on the phone with them today. Our water committee met with them last week, so we do have a lot of conversation. Just as a reminder what these PFASs are, they're per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, which are a man-made group of chemicals that include like PFOA, PFOS, and other chemicals. And they've been manufactured and used in a lot of industries around the globe and in the United States since nineteen forty. And they are found in a wide range of consumer products, such as cookware, pizza boxes, stain repellents. So, most people have been exposed at some point to PFAS, but it's important that we look forward to, you know, understanding these chemicals and how they can be, you know, eliminated completely. I am continuing to work, well, our team is continuing to work with Ramsey on the interconnect agreement that I had spoken about earlier. We already have one with Ridgewood, and I did receive an email just today from their committee, and I'll be reviewing with our legal team. And I firmly believe that water is such a valuable resource, and I'm really hopeful that we can continue to have, you know, start to have our Northwest Bergen County water utilities, you know, Ramsey has one, Waldwick has one, obviously Ridgewood Water, to work a little bit closer together. Back in April, we had had scheduled through the mayor's meeting, Ari had helped coordinate a water meeting. Unfortunately, that had to be canceled, and we're looking to put it on this fall. And I think that that's super important because it's a very valuable resource, and the best way that we can continue to preserve that resource is by working together and sharing information and resources. So, that's my report. Thanks so much to the water committee for all your help.
Great, thank you, Liz, and thank you for all your work on that. Councilman O'Call, would you like to give your report?
The committee has not met since our last meeting. We are shaping up to have a pretty full agenda for the next meeting. We will be meeting next week, having an interview with a potential intern from Northern Highlands. Councilman Sasso did a lot of work on that, so he will be joining us for that interview. And all things considered, the borough finances are in very good shape, and probably the most important thing, I don't know if she's on the meeting tonight, but I'd like to wish my mother a very happy birthday.
Aww.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim, would you like to give your report?
Excuse me. Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'm not used to talking. So, I know that Amy has left. I want to thank Amy for the Allendale Happenings newsletter. As a resident, I really appreciate it. I've referred to it several times since it came out, even though I'm a member of the council, there's just so much stuff going on in this town that I can never keep the exact dates straight. So, being able to refer to this email just like makes my life easier. One of the big dates coming up for me is Saturday, September twelfth. They're collecting the household hazardous waste, so this is old paint and cleaning supplies and all that stuff that's been building up in your basement or your garage. The responsible way to get rid of it is go to Camp Goff on Saturday, September twelfth. The parking lot at the base of Camp Goff Mountain is where they set it up. I've been doing it or I've been going there. They've been doing it for a long time. I've been going there for the past five or six years, and it's a very professionally-run operation. You never leave your vehicle, and make sure you do bring your driver's license, you need it for driving, but they will ask for identification to make sure you're a certain kind of resident. So, I do recommend that everybody take advantage of that. If you refer to the Allendale Happenings newsletter and find the section that has this, there's a link saying click here for more details, and it will give you a list of all the specific items that are accepted during this pickup, as well as some of the common mistakes of things you can't bring. And it's just a great thing to take advantage of. Excuse me. With regard to the DPW itself, things are going well, and, you know, with this last storm and power outage, everybody was once again stressed to their limits, but both the residents and the staff of Allendale, you know, rose to the occasion, and working with our private contractors, we made it through, and I'm very pleased to be in a town like Allendale that responded the way it did. The, yeah, so it is tomorrow night, tomorrow, and Saturday night, we're having two dining out nights in a row, and I want to thank everybody who's involved in that, public safety, DPW. Some of the people have to prepare for it and work overtime, as well as the preparation in advance of it, as well as the merchants, and again, the residents who are all pooling together, the residents by going and dining out to help our restaurants make it through this period. We're, of course, in the middle of summer, we're getting ready for the winter season. I had stopped by DPW building on New Street a week or two ago, and Dan Richards was hard at work preparing the equipment for the inevitable winter that's coming. So, I want to thank everybody for that. And as difficult as the curveballs have been thrown at the DPW, they're doing a great job, and they're doing it in a very efficient manner. One of the big worries in a year like this is that we're going to run over budget, and somehow Ron Kistner and his team continue to come in under budget and deliver five-star service as far as I'm concerned. I want to also mention that Rich McDowell has been doing a great job preparing the nine-eleven memorial for the service we're going to have on September eleventh, and I ask that those who can attend do out of respect, and as Amy mentioned, please wear a mask while you're out in public. That's it, Ari. Thank you very much.
Hey, Ari, can I just add something, just because Jim did remind me that actually today, I did ask my husband, the Bergen County Utility Authority, not only do we have regular collections, but you actually can drop off, and there are specific times, like e-waste, you know, all the computers and printers and things like that. So, I do recommend that people, if you have an opportunity to, and you have stuff, that people look at that instead of, you know, I know some people sometimes like, "Well, maybe I'll just put a little bit in my garbage," but it's super heavy, and it's the right way to do is to be able to go and drop it off. So, I just wanted to say Holman's had a successful drop off of a printer, two computers, you know, some old stuff.
I'd like to second that. Many of those hazardous waste drop-offs, they're great, they're easy. Like you said, Jim, you don't get out of the car. Get there early, you know, sit there in line. It's not bad, and it's a great way to get rid of stuff.
Great, thank you. Thank you both for adding to that, and Jim, thank you for your report.
I will give my mayor's report. Orange and Rockland reimbursing for food and prescription drug spoilage during, that was occurred during Tropical Storm Isaiah. So, as I reported at the meeting two weeks ago, if your home or business lost power for more than forty-eight consecutive hours, Orange and Rockland is reimbursing for storm-related food and prescription medicine spoilage. Residential customers may get reimbursement for up to two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars with itemized lists or up to five-hundred-and-forty dollars with receipts, and business owners are eligible for food spoilage reimbursement of up to ten-thousand-seven-hundred dollars with receipts. For more information and the claim form, you can go to their website, www.oru.com. As far as the final summer dine-out in Allendale, as Councilman Strouch mentioned, that this is the final summer. We are still, we understand that we may have the ability to do something, and we probably will be doing something in September and October to the extent that occupancy inside the establishment is either not prohibited, not permitted, or limited, that we may be doing something in the fall. But this weekend was the final summer, point of a summer dine-out, and so we're going to expand it both to Friday and to Saturday. So, Friday, starting at six o'clock, and Saturday, starting at five P.M. So, Friday, starting at 6:00, and Saturday, starting at 5:00 p.m. West Allendale Ave will be closed between DeMa Curio and the clock tower. We encourage everyone to come out and support our restaurants. Cancellation of the Allendale Water Festival and Fireworks Display. The Holiday Observers made the very difficult decision to cancel both the annual water festival at Crestwood Lake, which was scheduled for September 5th, and the fireworks display that was postponed from July 4th and rescheduled for September 12th. So, the Holiday Observers determined that in light of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, it was not worth the risk of reversing the progress that had been made to stem the spread of the virus. We're all very disappointed, as I know they are, but I think we can speak for everyone that we're very much looking forward to a time when we can all gather together to enjoy these events, especially their fireworks, and we thank the Holiday Observers for everything that they've done and the incredible amount of prudence that they've shown here. And that is it for my mayor's report. For staff reports, Ray, anything that you'd like to report?
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, anything you would like to report?
Just Governor Murphy signed an executive order recently making November's general election primarily evoke by mail, one similar to the primary. There will be some additional ways to cast ballots, and the county has notified each town that all their election divisions will be having a joint meeting with the towns shortly after Labor Day. So, once we get more information, we'll send out a message to our residents explaining the new process and their vote.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chief, is there anything that you would like to add? Thank you for being here, for bringing your men, and for all that you've done, you continue to do for us. Most appreciated. The last time, open the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to be heard. Not seeing or hearing anyone, close the meeting, and this brings us to the end, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Don't move, Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second?
Second, Strauss.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for putting up with our technical difficulties. Thank you for participating.
All right. Night, everybody.
Bye.